Here we go. We'll call the meeting of the Lincoln Park Mayor and City Council to order for Wednesday, January 3rd, 2018. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be immediately followed by the invocation by Carrie Hildebrandt of Lincoln Park Presbyterian Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Holy One known by many names and beyond all names, Spirit of life, Spirit of love, Spirit of community, Spirit of justice, we ask your blessings on the people who have been called to lead the community in which we live and work and play. Help them as leaders to not ask first, "How do we fix this?", but, "What do we need to learn?", "How might we need to change?", and "To whom do we need to listen?". Remind them, because we all forget from time to time, especially in the noisiness of what passes for political debate today, that they are not only leaders but also servants, and that it is their responsibility and ours to serve the common good of all. Remind them that no matter where we live, no matter our differences, because everyone is our neighbor, our sibling, and that throughout the ages prophets have called the leaders of the people to respect and protect the least of those among us: our children, the elderly, the poor, those who are hungry, those who have no homes, those who are ill in body, mind, or spirit, the strangers and immigrants in our midst, those who live on the margins, those who are alone, those who are forgotten. Grant them and us the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right and good and true. May they and we speak out when it is time to speak out, and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May they and we always be guided by the Spirit of community, by the Spirit of justice, and by the Spirit of love. This we pray in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy, all that we hold good and right and true. May it be so. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend.
Okay, if we could have roll call, please.
Councilperson Darzinski?
Here.
Higgins?
Here.
Kelsey?
Here.
Murphy?
Here.
Parkinson?
Here.
Mayor Kearns?
Here. Happy New Year, everyone. Happy New Year, we're back at it. Wednesday is not the ordinarily beating day for us, but due to the way that the calendar fell this year, it's just the way that it works out. Under Mayor's remarks, I want to first have Maureen Tobin come up, and she's going to enlighten us about two events that are coming up at, in Lincoln Park, at the Banjo area. Maureen?
Hi, thank you. Happy New Year, everybody. I just want to talk about two events that are coming up. The first one is the Jack Frost Jamboree. This is the second annual jamboree. Have about thirty-five vendors, crafters, some food. We have things for kids to do outside, snow angel contests, snow building contests. But the big event that I'm just love, and I'm here to challenge some of you in the city today, is the cardboard sled race. Now, what this is, is it entails, there's three groups, ages five to ten, eleven to thirteen, and thirteen and up. So if you fall in those categories, you build a sled completely out of cardboard, tape, glue, nothing else. They're inspected to make sure you don't have any screws, any metal, anything else. Any design you want, you can Google designs. It's a fun event that families can make together. I see that we have police chief here, we have fire chief here, and the council, and I would like to challenge you guys to build a sled with your guys, and see if you can beat us girls at Parks and Rec, because we hold the winner. We, I have the winning sled. So I'd really like to see the community come out and get involved in this. It's a lot of fun. Beginning of February is slow time, everybody's stuck in the house from winter, so it's a good opportunity to get out, meet some of your fellow neighbors, and just have a good time. Also, it'll be a great event with the vendors and crafters. So please consider, maybe even the council could break down and build a sled and come out to do a little competition with us. And the second event is the daddy-daughter dance. It's the Princess Ball this year, and it's on February 10th, from 5:00 to 7:00 o'clock, and there's pizza and sweets. And we have a disc jockey who is a Lincoln Park resident, graduated from Lincoln Park High School. His name's DJ Keo. It's a great event. Tickets are on sale now at the Banjo, they're $10 each. So please consider bringing your little princess out for a night with some fun. It can be your uncle, dads, grandfathers, brothers, just come on out and have a good time. Thank you.
If you want an example of what these sleds look like, the first and second place ones are on the cover of the Happenings magazine-
Yes.
-that was just mailed out to everybody and is available on the website. And had there been snow, the second-place finisher would have been first, by the way.
Oh, so far from it, so far from it. Thank you.
No, third place didn't finish. Neither did fourth, no, there wasn't. There was only, there was only two. Next item that I have is a reappointment, is to the Public Safety Commission for a five-year term. I think that this will be the beginning of his third, fifth-year term, Mr. Joel Solomon. Joel, he wanted just to come up. We can't do the swearing-in, because that's all locked up in the safe, but if you want to say a few words, say hello.
I can swear at him, he just will have to come back and say it.
Okay, well, well, come on up, and we can do the swearing-in. You'll just have to-
No one told me, sir, otherwise I'd have been ready for you. You do raise your right hand. You do hereby swear affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state, and will faithfully discharge the duties for the Public Safety Commission to the best of your ability by saying, "I do."
I do.
Okay, so then you'll have to stop by my office sometime in next week, within ten days, and I love your tie.
Thank you.
Very good. Excellent. Congratulations, Joel.
Did you want to get a picture of him in front of you?
Very nice.
So come out here with it. Congratulations, Joel. Thank you.
Don't mind me, talk amongst yourselves.
Mayor, if I could at this time, I'd just like to congratulate you on your selection. Joel has been a permanent member of our commission for many years now, and I'm really proud to have him with us.
Yes, yes, I totally agree. His dedication, not only that, he's giving away for his family members, because his daughter is also a member of the Library Commission, I believe, Historical Commission, Historical Commission. I'm working on the library thing. All right, next thing we have is the Fort Street Plaza, Fort Neumann's Plaza. We had a meeting, it was in December, before Christmas, the city manager. I was there, Building Department representatives, I think, police, and our planner was there, and such, and to move this project forward, to see what the stalemate was, because this has recently been sold, and what the progress, how we're going to, you know, what was their plan for the future for this. Our main thing that we wanted to get accomplished from this meeting, and we did accomplish it over the past week, was to get all of these buildings in line for an inspection, to see what was necessary to bring them up to where they could be occupied, and to have a plan for the time that it was going to take for those. That has been done. The owner, the owner's representative, is meeting with our Building Department official each morning, each and every morning, to make sure that these things get done. So there is progress being made. I mean, we still need to have people come in and occupy that. There are people that are interested, but this current owner, from when speaking to him, he is very interested about having these places occupied. Obviously, it's best for him and it's best for us, but he is truly concerned and wants it, and not so much for his profit, because he thinks that that's the way that it should be. Now, we've heard this before, but I believe totally that this is what they wish to accomplish, but we need to get it done within our rules about, so that permits are obtained for the work that they're going to do, and that everything is done according to oil. So that is proceeding. There's some word on the other complex that we talked about, the Sears Plaza. Over at Dixon Southfield, you have an area, if you've been down there, that has been recently fenced off. The owners of that property, who also own the former Farmer Jack building in Allen Park behind that, are interested in tearing down these structures, and then starting afresh. Work has been done on the Farmer Jacks in the back, but no permit or anything of that type has been applied for with the city just yet, so we don't know the full extent of what is going to be done. It's just that we have met with Grand Saquon, at this point, it was two, three months ago, that they were talking about the possibility of that coming down, and different uses for that property. Again, we don't have current information about what is going to be happening, other than the intent for that to tear down, but we don't have any notification that, permit-wise, that that's what they're going to do. I'll fill in as soon as we get more information, but I figured that whenever we go someplace to talk to people, that's, you know, the first or second thing that comes up is what the progress of those two things are. So with that, I think that we will move to the consent agenda. Got my wife watching me in the audience, it's kind of unraveling for me.
You can stay and make faces at it.
So we have resolved that the following item listed under the consent agenda, the approval is presented to the Mayor and City Council. One approved minutes, relevant meeting held December 18, 2017.
Go move.
Support.
Discussion? Court call the roll.
Councilperson Murphy?
Yes.
Darzinski?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Kearns?
Yes. Now, how far down?
I want you to read, since this is breaking right up to the word destiny.
Okay, here we go. First item that we have is resolved that ordinance to amend the codified ordinances of the City of Lincoln Park by adding a new chapter, 894, entitled Tax Abatement, Rivers' Edge Apartments, be given its third and final reading, adopted and be given immediate effect. The Lincoln Park, the City of Lincoln Park ordains that the codified ordinances of the City of Lincoln Park be amended to include a new chapter, 894, as follows. Chapter 894, Tax Abatement, Rivers' Edge Apartments. 894.01, short title. This chapter shall be known and cited as the City of Lincoln Park Tax Abatement Ordinance for the Rivers' Edge Apartments. 894.02, preamble and purpose. It is acknowledged that it is a proper public purpose of the State of Michigan and its political subdivisions to provide housing for its citizens of low or moderate income, and to encourage the development of such housing by providing for service charge in lieu of property taxes in accordance with the State Housing Development Authority Act of 1966, which is 1966 Public Act 346 as amended, MCLA Section 125.1401. And the City of Lincoln Park is authorized by said act to establish or change the service charge to be paid in lieu of taxes by any or all classes of housing exempt from taxation under the act, any amount it chooses not to exceed the taxes that would be paid for but the act. For, but, yeah, okay. It is further acknowledged that such housing for persons of low or moderate income is public necessary, necessity, and as the City of Lincoln Park will be benefited and improved by such housing, that the encouragement of same by providing certain real estate exemption for housing is a valid public purpose. Further, that the continuation of the provisions of this article for tax exemption and service charge in lieu of taxes during the periods hereafter contemplated in this chapter are essential to the determination of economic feasibility of the housing development which is constructed and financed in reliance thereon. The City of Lincoln Park acknowledges the Rivers' Edge Apartment Limited Divided Housing Association Limited Partnership and Community Care Services, in quotations, the sponsor, a certified 501(c)(3) has offered subject to receipt of a mortgage loan from the authority as defined below, and an allocation of low-income housing tax credits from the authority to acquire land and those of housing development to identified as Rivers' Edge Apartments on certain property located in the City of Lincoln Park at 26182 West Outer Drive, and more particularly described on Exhibit A attached here to incorporate here and to serve persons of low or moderate income, and that the sponsor is offered to pay the city on account of this housing development and annual service charge for the public services in lieu of all taxes. I'll move on that.
Support.
Discussion? Court call the roll.
Mayor Kearns?
Yes.
Councilperson Darzinski?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Murphy?
No.
Parkinson?
Yes.
All right. Next item has a cover letter from Steve Martin, Fire Chief. Fire Department had applied for and was awarded funds through the Assistance to Firefighters' Grant Program to purchase three new thermal imaging cameras. The two cameras currently in use are nearing the end of their useful age and no longer meet those of the most recent NFPA standards. Okay. Whereas Lincoln Park Fire Department was awarded the Assistance to Firefighters' Grant, AFG, for the purpose of new station equipment. Whereas the Fire Chief would like permission to solicit for competitive bids to purchase three new thermal imaging cameras with Assistance to Firefighters' Grant funds. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and Council of the City of Lincoln Park authorize the Fire Chief to solicit proposals for the new, for the purchase of three new thermal imaging cameras that meet NFPA 1801, which is the most stringent standard for fire service thermal imaging cameras. So moved.
Support.
Discussion? Court call the roll.
Councilperson Kelsey?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Darzinski?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Kearns?
Yes. Second item also has a cover letter from the Fire Chief. And the Fire Department applied for and was awarded funds through the Assistance to Firefighters' Grant Program to purchase a new vehicle exhaust ventilation system. The exhaust system currently in use is nearly twenty years old and fails to meet the most recent standards regarding firefighters' occupational health and safety. Whereas the Lincoln Park Fire Department was awarded the Assistance to Firefighters' Grant for the purchase of new station equipment. Whereas the Fire Chief would like permission to solicit for competitive bids to purchase a new vehicle exhaust ventilation system with Assistance to Firefighters' Grant funds. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and Council of the City of Lincoln Park authorize the Fire Chief to solicit proposals for the purchase, for the purchase of a new station vehicle exhaust ventilation system that meets NFPA 1500, the standard for Fire Department occupational health and safety. So moved.
Support.
No, we don't want to make a difference. Discussion? Court call the roll.
Councilperson Kelsey?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Darzinski?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Kearns?
Yes. Nice work, chief, by the way. Next item has a cover letter from Dorian Christian, Director of the Office of Community Planning and Development. And the purpose is to schedule a public hearing for the purpose of considering the use and allocation of the fiscal year 2018-19, forty-fourth program year of the CDBG budget. At this time, the federal budget has not been set. Her closest approximation for the next year's allocation would be the current year's budget figure of $711,680. In addition to this amount, we anticipate generating funds through the operation of our residual rehabilitation revolving loan program that will be reinvested in the same program. As you know, anything more about that amount will be allocated, I will pass along to you. Studies required by HUD regulations to hold public hearings, and here are citizen comment regarding the allocation of these funds. There are two public hearings held, one with the Mayor and Council, 2518, and the second with the Community Improvement Commission, 21518. All applications that are received are forwarded before and after the public hearings. So resolved that a public CDBG budget hearing is hereby scheduled for Monday, February 5th, 2018, starting at 6:30 PM, to be held in the John A. Alouise City Council Chambers of City Hall. The public is invited to attend and give testimony as to how the upcoming fiscal year CDBG budget should be allocated, and a notice shall be placed in the official newspaper for the city and posted in city-owned buildings. Be further resolved that Dorian Christian, Director of Community Planning and Development, is authorized and directed to have prepared the annual action plan and environmental review record, and submit same to HUD for review and approval. So moved.
Support.
Discussion? Court call the roll.
Councilperson Murphy?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Darzinski?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Kearns?
Yes. Next item has a cover letter from, I think it's Mr. Kazoo, our DPS Director. Authorization change order for the Police Department Roof Repair Replacement. The Schreiber Corporation was the last bidder for the Police Department Roofing Project and was awarded the bid. There are some unforeseen repairs needed that were found during the replacement. These repairs require additional funds above the original bid price. The additional scope of work involves installation of metal edging, provide install skylights, provide six-inch wood nailer and canopy, replace rotted nailer at canopy, remove and replace steel deck, additional work on ducts, add to replace two roof drains, and raise the curb, the roof curbs. So it's resolved that the Mayor and City Council hereby authorize a change order for the Schreiber Company for additional repairs needed for the Police Department Roof Project in the amount of $12,598.50. Be further resolved that the Mayor and City Council authorize the funds to be taken from account 410-001-983000, Capital Improvement Fund. So moved.
Support.
Discussion?
Question to the Chair, to the manager, I guess, or to John, is when they did the bidding, they never come across none of this stuff? I mean, when they physically looked at it, to quote the job? I mean, I understand some of this stuff might be hidden, but it seems like a lot of money, $12,000 for somebody to, I mean, question.
Actually, through the Chair, actually, these items were anticipated, but we didn't put a number on them. We did put unit items so that they could give us a price for it. The stuff like the rotted roof nailers, until you remove the actual roof, you can't see that. So these are discoveries which we had anticipated. The skylights, again, they were cracked. You put back the cracked ones, or you replace them. We replaced them. We couldn't verify that those cracks, we couldn't see the cracks. So we put something in there for that, just in case, and all this stuff was basically resultant of discovery. Because you don't want to tear apart a roof to find out, oh, you might have problems, because if the project never went through, then you've got a torn-up roof. And right now, the project came in approximately seven and a half percent over budget. Typically, in a construction project, you're doing relatively well if you're 10% to 15% over.
Okay, to the Chair, I was just surprised, because usually these guys are pretty good about doing that, that's all I, you know, they would put some kind of ballpark figure in, and I know what you're saying, John, I understand all that, but people that do professional work, even when I had my roof done, they're kind of, they kind of give you rate, but the discovery about the issue of the rotted wood, but some of that stuff is quite evident, they'll tell you, well, you need to replace this, or whatever, but we don't know how bad it is, but, you know, it's going to cost you anywhere from $400 to $500, but let you know upfront when we get into it, you know? That's why I was just curious, but that's fine. I appreciate it. Thank you, Your Honor.
For the discussion? Court call the roll.
Councilperson Murphy?
Yes.
Darzinski?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Kearns?
Yes. Next item that we have also has a cover letter from John Kazoo, Public Safety Director. In background, the City of Lincoln Park currently owns four Elgin Gutters Broom Sweepers, model year 2004. Three of the sweepers have been rebuilt with a forced sweeper, M85, still in poor condition. Useful life expectancy is ten years, and sweeper is over that expectancy. If the sweeper is approved to be refurbished, allow the DPS to have four sweepers in use, which allow for better service to the city. We have two times a year where there is a much heavier load of street sweeping, spring when the trees drop their seeds, and fall for leaves. During the fall season, the sweepers run approximately nine weeks, from October 1st through the first week of December, the first freeze. After the fall leaf pickup, the motorola assessed the condition of M85. The sweeper is in very poor condition. If the sweeper is not rebuilt as requested, it will completely fail, and the DPS will be unable to use a sweeper for spring street sweeping. And it's imperative that the DPS has all four street sweepers in use for that time. Bell Equipment is the sole provider of Elgin Sweepers. When the other three sweepers were rebuilt, the city waived the bidding process and approved Bell Equipment to make these repairs, due to them being the sole company that is able to make those repairs. So whereas Bell Equipment Company is the State of Michigan's sole authorized dealership and repair facility of Elgin Sweepers. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and City Council waive the bidding process and approve the refurbishment and repairs of street sweeper M85 at a total cost not to exceed $25,000 to come from multiple accounts number 661-932-778000. So moved.
Support.
Your Honor, if I could just comment, one of the main complaints that I get, out of all the complaints we get during the year, it's about the street sweeping. I'm glad we're going to be able to take care of that.
I have a question through the Chair.
Yes, sir.
For John, is this the one where the gas gauge doesn't work? Or is that a different one? I remember I was down there one time, and the guy ran out of gas because the gauge was malfunctioning. Was this the one that we're going to repair? Or was it another one? Okay, all right.
Through the Chair.
Yes, sir.
John, just for information, what's the replacement cost on the Elgin Sweeper?
The replacement cost? At this point in time, I thought, two years ago, replacement cost was $182,000. At today's dollars, it's $205,000 per sweeper. Two hundred and five thousand. You could have knocked me over with that number.
Before you sit down, what, how long can, with these repairs, how long do you think it would extend the life of the sweeper?
Right now, if we do nothing, the sweeper's down and out, it will not function. Making these repairs, I'm hoping that we'll get another five years out of it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. Court call the roll.
Councilperson Murphy?
Yes.
Darzinski?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Kearns?
Yes. The next item, or the three items, actually have a cover letter from the city manager, Mr. Copler. And the employment agreements for the Chief of Police, Deputy Chief of Police, and Fire Chief must be renewed every two years. Chief of Police and Deputy Fire Chief are working on the agreements put in place by the emergency manager while the Fire Chief is missing, is finishing, a one-year agreement that was put in place to align his agreement with the other two public safety employment agreements. The three agreements are similar, aligned with the benefits that are provided to either the Police Command Unit or the Fire Union, respectively, to the department they administrate. Language for health and pension benefits mirror the collective bargaining agreements of the unions in each department, as do provisions for leave. Unlike the collective bargaining agreements, these contracts have in lieu of overtime provision that is similar to other department directors, and an additional personal leave days. I'm trying to align the pay for these three positions with those wages found in surrounding jurisdictions. As you might expect, wages for these positions have been reduced due to the financial struggles of the city, placing the pay well below the pay of similar positions in surrounding communities. Yet the level of service provided by- Yet the level of service provided by their departments and difficulties presented because of the city's financial conditions make their jobs far more demanding. With that being said, we cannot bring their pay on par with their counterparts in one agreement term, so the agreements presented only begin to accomplish this goal. And wage adjustments, the police chief currently $79,816. To 2018 would be $85,000, and 2019, $87,500. Fire chief currently $79,000. 2018, $83,500. 2019, $85,500. Deputy police chief, $73,500. 2018, $78,000. And 2019, $80,500. And the wages, the adjustment in wage benefits will not have a detrimental effect on the fiscal year 2017/18 budget. So therefore, we will start with, whereas the city must renew the employment agreement with the Fire Chief, and whereas the city manager recommends the adoption of the attached employment agreement with Fire Chief Steve Martin, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council approve the employment agreement by and between the city of Lincoln Park and Fire Chief Steve Martin. Be further resolved that the mayor is authorized to execute said employment agreement on behalf of the city of Lincoln Park.
So moved.
Support.
Discussion?
Got a question through the Chair. After the meeting, could you let me know what other communities you looked at for the, I tried to do it online and didn't show it on some of their basic websites they had. I was just curious. And second question I got is that, is there a reason the Fire Chief is the lowest of the three as far as the wage? Is that because when you look at the?
Well, it wasn't the lowest of the three.
No, it wasn't? I'm sorry. I apologize on.
He's right in the middle, okay.
Yeah, it would be just a little bit behind what the police chief, yeah.
Between the top and the bottom. Okay, all right.
For understanding, I know historically, there was a parity between the police chief and fire chief.
Okay.
I don't necessarily follow convention of how things were, but, but understanding that, that the police chief has been in his position two years, he's been, the Fire Chief's been in his position one year, I'm trying to set up kind of progression for everyone. Because, you know, again, at some point, hopefully, well down the road, they're going to retire.
Mm-hmm.
And then, you know, we're, I would hope that we don't start at the top rate for the next person. We go back and, and again, follow a progression.
Well, that was one of my concerns. You already addressed that, you know, because once you get to the top, there's no way to go but back. And that, you know, if you get there too fast, there's no wiggle room when you negotiate. The other question I got is, is that, I know we used to have a deputy chief, and we don't have one now, so we're not giving the existing chief any more money for actually taking on the deputy chief's responsibilities? I mean, because he doesn't have one, like, if the other communities, if I read it right, they have deputy chiefs.
Yeah.
What I'm just saying is that if he's doing the extra duty and that, then it should be compulsory for what he's doing, is what I'm getting at. Even though, you know, it's a little bit, you know, there's no backup person, he's the main guy, you know?
If you remember, remember back in the budget process, I had approached the concept that, you know, in mid-year, we're going to review everything and see if there is a need for a deputy fire chief. So we're in, finishing up that review process, so there could be something coming forward that addresses that. So that's kind of why.
Okay.
I looked at it the way I did.
That's fine. I just either didn't, I forgot that, or I didn't remember that, that's why I was just, okay.
Not to remember.
Uh, yeah.
Because, like, you know, earlier tonight, I forgot things.
No, thank you very much. I'm all set.
Further discussion? Court call the roll, please.
Councilperson Murphy?
Yes.
Darzinski?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Kearns?
Yes. Next item is, whereas the city must renew the employment agreement with the Chief of Police, and whereas the city manager recommends the adoption of the attached employment agreement with Police Chief Raymond Waters, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council approve the employment agreement by and between the city of Lincoln Park and Police Chief Raymond Waters, and be it further resolved that the mayor is authorized to execute said employment agreement on behalf of the city of Lincoln Park.
So moved.
Support.
Discussion? Court call the roll.
Councilperson Murphy?
Yes.
Darzinski?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Kearns?
Excuse me. And lastly, whereas the city must renew the employment agreement with the deputy police chief, and whereas the city manager recommends the adoption of the attached employment agreement with Deputy Chief Joseph Laviss, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council approve the employment agreement by and between the city of Lincoln Park and Deputy Police Chief Joseph Laviss, and be it further resolved that the mayor is authorized to execute said employment agreement on behalf of the city of Lincoln Park.
So moved.
Support.
Discussion? Court call the roll.
Councilperson Murphy?
Yes.
Darzinski?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Kearns?
Yes. Yeah, before we jump down to the next. Who was the? All right, we have a proposed resolution that does not, by Councilperson Parkinson, that does not have a support at this time, but, whereas the city of Lincoln Park currently utilized the Downriver Central Dispatch to handle emergency calls from the public and dispatch police, fire, and ambulance resources to, in response to those calls. Whereas in the city of 2017, the city manager presented a report that provided three options for the mayor and council to consider for the provision of dispatch services to the city of Lincoln Park. And now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council choose to withdraw from the Downriver Central Dispatch and begin the city providing dispatch services for the police, fire, and ambulance inside of the city of Lincoln Park. Be it further resolved that the mayor and council direct the city manager in cooperation with the chiefs of police and fire to provide a plan to effectuate this decision, said plan to be presented to the mayor and city council by no later than February 5, 2018. And be further resolved that this plan provide the following elements, the date when the city will take over the actual dispatching, the location of dispatch center, estimated costs associated with renovating the location, staffing plan and estimated cost for staffing, D, technologic, technology requirement list, and estimate cost for required technology, and E, financial plan that shows how this action will be funded to keep within the current appropriate framework. So is there a second to this motion?
Your Honor, I was, okay.
No, you go ahead.
I was going to say, I don't really agree with it, but I'll support it so we can discuss it.
That's what I was going to say.
Okay, then with that, I have a item from the Public Safety Commission Chairman Frank Vazwell. Whereas the Lincoln Park Public Safety Commission held its regularly scheduled meeting on December 21st, 2017, and whereas discussions ensued concerning the operation of the department's central dispatch center, the Chief of Police and the Chief of the Fire Department were invited to give testimony to the commission concerning operations of the center. After listening carefully and having all questions of the commission answered by the chiefs, be it resolved that the commission advises the Lincoln Park City Council to maintain participation in Downriver Central Dispatch cooperation, as is in the best interest of the city, public safety, and the residents of Lincoln Park, and that motion passed unanimously. So is there further discussion?
Well, then, hearing none, then court call the roll.
Councilperson Parkinson?
Yes.
Murphy?
No.
Darzinski?
Yes.
Higgins?
No.
Kelsey?
No.
Mayor Kearns?
No.
It does not pass.
Okay, so we move on to accounts and claims payable over $25,000. Resolve that the accounts and claims payable for those items greater than $25,000 to be approved as follows. Plaid a law firm, June and July 2017 legal fees, $21,773.78. Plaid a law firm, August 2017 legal fees, $28,285. City of Riverview, November 2017 waste removal, $25,571.81. Twenty-Fifth District Court, January 2018, $45,946. Tennessee Engineers, various city projects, $73,907.44. Advanced Lighting and Sound, upgrades to city cable equipment and council chambers and cable room, $32,271. GV Cement, 2017 concrete sectional program, $46,853.41. JB Contractors, 2017 sidewalk replacement, $54,424.68.
So moved.
Support.
Discussion?
Question on the advanced lighting and sound. After our last, after the very first council meeting, there were some complaints from some residents, and one of the letters was forwarded to all the council and the mayor concerning some of the quality of the, seeing the charts up on the TV and at home and so on and so forth. Have we addressed those?
There's, so, in, in some of those issues, we believe are not related to the equipment that the city has. It's a potentially Comcast issue. I think one of the other things that, again, is not a technology issue, but the way we do it, if, if you have very small print on your presentation, it's not going to come across very well the way it's done. So it's, it's something that we're going to have to do to upgrade our, our presentations, to make sure that, you know, there's a standard size print. You know, usually you want something probably in the 28 font, size font range. That way it'll be very clear on the, the screen. So there's a couple of things we have to do internally to make sure that we're putting together the, the best presentation. But I know that they are scheduling some, to have Comcast come out, and we're going to do some trial runs to see if, in fact, that's where the, the issues lie.
Last question I got is, when we were watching it, you had a disconnect between the person talking and the actual sound coming out, and somebody had said from the audience afterwards that that's the way this system works. I don't know if that's true or not, because it's the way I usually look, because if you're saying something, it rhymes with your, with your mouth action, so you can actually follow along. Am I right or wrong on that?
Well, if you're referring to the monitors here, okay, so, so the issue is that this is traveling in the system, so it's not, as you're speaking, there's a, you know, maybe a one, you know, less than, probably around a one-second delay. So when you watch it, you may be talking, that on the screen is behind what you're actually doing.
Does that happen at home also?
No.
Okay, so it's just here.
Yeah, they're just, they're seeing what you're seeing on the screen. Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, is there further discussion? Court call the roll.
Councilperson Kelsey?
Yes.
Darzinski?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Kearns?
Yes. Then we will move right into the city manager's report. Mr. Koppler?
Happy New Years, everyone.
Happy New Year, and carrying on with the Councilman Kelsey's, I think part of that is just learning curve for, for us, what type of font to use.
Yeah.
And when we go to present, it might be good to have a best uses thing that we can give to our presenters.
Yes, yeah, I think that's, you know, it's something that, whereas that before was kind of ingrained in everyone, because early on, they made the same mistakes that we're making right now. And it's just, again, if, because we, we never really did a lot of those presentations, and the presentations were on the small screens, it really didn't matter what, what you did. But as we're trying to get a little bit more fluent with what we're doing to get the, the public more educated about what's going on within the city, we're going to have to change what that style is. And actually, we're going to have a couple of presentations tonight. Hopefully, that, we'll see if, if we've learned anything or not. But the first presentation tonight was going to be by, is going to be by Chief Waters, and he's going to do a review of what we had talked about, I think, at the last meeting, regarding our reserve, use of our reserve officers. And he's done some work and put something together, but he's diligently trying to get that up, so I'll talk a little bit more. Let you know that we had our closeout meeting, as councils are aware, we had a visit from Michigan OSHA, based upon a complaint about our restrooms, which they found, which we knew unfounded complaints. But unfortunately, if you walk into our building and you're with OSHA, you're going to see issues. And the issue that they latched on to is that the city does have some asbestos tile within the, the building. And in a perfect world, it's not an issue, but unfortunately, what they noticed were some of the broken tiles in the main floor. And that brought up the question of, when did the city do the, the environmental review of the building? And can you produce it? And unfortunately, although there were a lot of memories of, of some type of survey done of this building, we were never able to find said survey. So, you know, unfortunately, based upon the, the closeout meeting we had today, within the next 30 or 45 days, we'll be getting a nice letter from OSHA detailing what they think that's worth to them in terms of not having that survey. In the meantime, we're putting together what it's going to cost and bringing to you the ability to go out and bid that work, so we will have a survey done. The other elements of it, so it's not just the survey, the other elements of it is, since we do have the asbestos within the building, you know, you're supposed to have a communication, hazard communication plan with the employees to make sure that they're not doing anything to make it worse, as well as, you don't want to be doing that. As well as our contractor does the janitorial services, we have to make sure that they have their employees trained, as well as the proper equipment, so they don't spread it in the air or on the ground. So those are the issues that they've now focused on. I think where we probably will not escape a fine of some type, I, I think, you know, the actions that we've taken over the last couple of weeks, as well as what we're going to be taking, will show the good faith that we don't deserve that, you know, a, a large fine of some type. But as soon as I get the packet from OSHA, then it'll be in our, our process to try to negotiate that downward. But as soon as we get that, like I said, it's probably going to be 30 to 45 days out. Talk some more? Yep, okay. Something that's going to be coming to the next meeting, I believe, the Fire Chief is working on the ambulance services contract. That is scheduled to end at the end of April of this year, so he'll be putting together a bid specification and requests to bid that out, which you'll see at the, I think it's the 16th, if I'm not mistaken, which, again, is not on a Monday night. So the first two meetings, yeah, the first two meetings are not on the Mondays. You know, there, there's been a lot of change, I think, since we last bid that out back in 2015, I believe. And, you know, unfortunately, there may not be as much competition as what was out there in 2015, so we'll have to see how that ultimately works out, but, should I keep going, or, you ready?
Roll.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
So I had one more thing, but we'll go to Chief Waters.
Okay. So I wanted to give you guys a breakdown on what our reserve officers do, what our program does, and compare it to what the other Downriver communities with how their reserve program works, and kind of compare them, how we do them compared to what others do, and what state law says we can do and cannot do. First of all, I want to say that our reserves are, we got an incredible group of guys that we could call them literally in the drop of a dime, and they're, boom, they're right there to help us do just about anything we ask them to do. So we appreciate their service and everything that they help us do. We currently are staffed with eight reserve officers. They supplement our uniformed police force, and we use our reserve force for special events like the Memorial Day Parade, our Lincoln Park Days, funeral details, St. Elmo Mile event, Lincoln Park High School, 5K fundraiser, and Angels Night. We also use them in emergency situations like the power outage that we had last year. They helped us direct traffic and do a lot of things that we needed at that time, as many people as we could get. They do some patrols on the weekends in designated areas assigned by shift commander, and in addition to special events, our reserve officers volunteer their time to the department and city by helping out with events like our Shop with a Hero program, our Cop Scare Program. to the department and city by helping out with events like our Shop With A Hero program, our Cop Scare Picnics, and our Goodfellas collections. Now those events are all, they're police related, but they, they literally come in on their own time and just help us do our volunteer work. Um, and again, like when I initially started off by saying, they're incredible guys and they do, they all have full-time jobs that they come in and, uh, drop what they're doing to help us out on our special events. So some of the limitations that we have are because the state of Michigan says the reserve officers have no police authority. Other than that, of a private citizen, and they must exercise their police powers through a licensed police officer. So this limits how they can be used by any agency in the state of Michigan, including us. Also, our patrol contract limits how the reserve officers can be used. And so knowing that, that's what we have, that's how we use our guys, comparing them to how other down river communities use their police forces and then try and see, is there things we can change or do differently with what we have. So Southgate P D, they currently have twelve reserve officers. They again have no police powers and they only use them for special events and are directed to check the parks. Taylor, they currently have thirty auxiliary officers. They call them auxiliary, same or similar, um, type of thing. And they are looking at between five and ten more this year. They have no police powers and they're directed to check parks, businesses that give them, businesses that give them permission. They're also currently allowed to issue handicap parking tickets at places like the Southland Mall. But, uh, Taylor's currently reviewing this policy because of some problems that it's caused over the last couple of years. And they are also used for special events. Windat Police Department currently has fifteen reserve officers. They have no police power. They're used for special events like parades and street fair. And they're instructed to check parks and businesses. Rouge, four auxiliary officers to help assist with their road patrol. They have no police powers. They assist with weekend patrols and special events. Melvindale Island Park and E course currently do not have any programs. Um, so going back to what we can and cannot do and how we can use them and how we should use them, I was speaking with, uh, the M M L, which is the Michigan Municipal League, our insurance carrier. Um, I explained to them how we use our reserve program. They currently support how we, uh, use our reserve program, our reserve officers, and cautioned us on strain away from how we currently use those, our program. And, uh, in doing so, cautioned that, um, reminded us that the city of Oakley was dropped by the M M L because of a misuse of reserve officers. And it caused quite a problem for that, uh, village. So after speaking with our down river agencies, it appears that we're all pretty similar on how we use our reserve officers. Um, and we're open to any changes that we could benefit or that would benefit the city of Lincoln Park. And we'll continue to examine how this could be done. But at this time, we'll continue to use our reserve officers in the same manner that we are going about right now. And that's all I got for you.
Can you put it the training of the?
Reserve officers, they currently have to have the same training that we have. So anything that we do, we try to give them the same training. Um, and then that's another thing, what, what comes out is, we don't like to put them in situations where they could get, um, where they could fail. So even though they're getting the same treatment, or I'm sorry, treatment, same, uh, training that our guys get, uh, the day, the day, the shift, the shift training that every officer goes, because again, our reserves are, are great guys, but they're also working at Ford's and their managers at other departments or stores and things. And they come in to help us out. They don't get the day-to-day training that our, my full-time officers receive. So the, um, the little things that the guys learn on the road, uh, intuitions that they gather, those guys aren't getting that. So we're, we're very selective on how we put them in certain spots. We don't want them to fail or get hurt.
The patrol contract, it's been a while, but I think the, uh, limitation was that in order to use a reserve officer for a special detail, an officer would also have to be on, on overtime for that detail. Is that?
Correct, so they can basically help, but they can't take over like an overtime assignment. We can supplement those guys with our road patrol or our uniform officers, but they can't just take over that whole assignment and just, uh, cut cost. And then another thing is, is that, uh, patrol contract says that they don't necessarily have to work with those officers. So it becomes an issue of Manning, um, M M L. I explained to them that we doubled those guys up. He would, they were fine with that, but they really prefer that it's operated a different way, but they're fine with, as long as they're together, doubled up, two reserves.
And lastly on my part, are you looking to expand your numbers?
Yeah, we're, we're always looking to, you know, get bigger, get better. So, yeah, we haven't advertised, but as you know, we had, um, one of our officers passed away and, uh, so we, we are down one right now.
Yeah. And that the reserve officers have to go through, uh, academy like?
There is a police academy, yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh,
I have a question, Your Honor.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Chief, you mentioned, uh, that another community, a small community, Oakley, had some problems. Could you elaborate on those a little bit? I know we've had questions about how we can make our more, our, our officers more valuable to us.
Right, so it was, it was really more than one issue. It was, uh, several issues that brought on numerous lawsuits. Lot of misuse of power, probably just letting them do things that they legally weren't out.
Is there something in particular that we could do to, to give them a little bit, uh, more value to the department that we're not doing right now?
I don't think so, not right now, no.
Sure. Yes, sir. Uh, what is the usual amount of patrol people or reserves you keep?
We have eight right now.
And what's your, what are you supposed to have?
Well, there's no set number that we have to have.
Thank you.
Through to Chair.
Yes, sir.
Um, Chief, thank you. And your reserve officers, if we didn't have those reserve officers, we wouldn't be able to have a Memorial Day Parade. That's how significant they are, just the net one special event, so. And they work full-time jobs.
They do, they are, like I said a couple of times, these guys work full-time jobs, but they come in and help with funeral details. They come in and help with the Shop With A Hero program. They come in, anytime we ask them, something is going on and, and, and we need the supplement, they drop what they're doing to help us out. They're incredible.
There's a word for that, it's called dedication. Thank you, Chief.
Got a question through the Chair.
Yes, sir.
To the Chief. Do they carry when they're, when they, so they actually carry a weapon or a department-issued weapon?
They do. And, and they qualify.
I was just going to say they're trying to use it.
Yep. So they qualify with the same in the range and then we take them, uh, you've seen the, uh, the F A T S training. They qualify in that too.
That's why I was curious, because, you know, and just as a, a side point, as, as a citizen, if, and they are not cops, or something like that, but we're giving them a gun and going out there and we're giving them training, sometimes we're putting them someplace where they shouldn't be, you know, I mean, that's the way, I mean,
Right, and that's why I try to.
That's what I was just going to say, because if they go out.
We try to, you know, be careful, but you can't predict the future. We try not to put them in spots where we think that they could fail or get hurt.
That's why I was getting at, because, uh, it's, looks good when you look at the reserve officer and all the equipment and everything and the gun and all that stuff, but when you look at the actual behind the scenes where it goes, that's where it gets kind of iffy. Uh, the, the other question I got is, the reserve officer has the same, I guess, uh, powers as a citizen, like citizens of, um, I'm not sure if this is correct, but that would be what a citizen could possibly do without getting himself in harm based upon the situation, am I correct? I mean, without going into all the details.
Correct.
Like, you know, I don't want to say citizens arrest, but certain things they, a citizen is, can do that, that is, uh, by the state law or by the federal court is determined that's within the parameters of just an ordinary citizen.
Correct.
Okay.
So any, any, any powers, police powers that they would use, it would be through, if they worked with a uniformed officer, that would be different? Yeah, then they're doing everything.
Like winning tickets would be through the actual.
Right, it would be the other guy, name would be on the ticket.
Gotcha. Thank you very much.
Anything further for the Chief? Now that, uh, one of the reserve officers, Hatter, I believe, was the, uh, top collector for the Goodfellas for last year and this year and.
He, uh, he volunteers a lot of his time, does a very good job. He's, he comes to, you know, like I said, it, it, he volunteers his time to go out there and, and, and frees out, you know, so that he can help, uh, a stranger out in need. And then, you know, we, we call him too, he'll come and he drops whatever he's doing to help us do the Shop With A Hero, the Cop Scare Picnics. He's out there goofing around and screwing off all the kids too. Uh, he's, our guys are, they're good guys.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate, uh, your effort and your point.
That's pretty good. It could be a little bit larger font, but it would, it would mean more, more slides, but, um, the last, last item I had was, uh, a quick update on fifteen eighty, eighty-two Fort. Uh, you might recall, a couple of meetings ago, uh, there was a discussion, um, on this property and, uh, the, an extension was given to them to, uh, do some work to, uh, make it a safe building. Uh, since that time, uh, it was kind of a slow start, but in talking with the building official, uh, earlier this evening, what he told me is there is now an agreement on what the, the items that have to be brought up to, to meet a safe building has been agreed upon between, uh, he and the potential owner of the building. Um, however, uh, a bond has not been pulled yet, nor has the property switched hands. So, uh, he, I think, is meeting with them again tomorrow and is meeting on a weekly basis. There's a clear understanding that a bond has to be pulled before any permits will be issued. You know, we're, we're into about thirty to forty-five days, I think, of the ninety days that you'd given them to make it safe. Uh, in talking with John earlier, he felt that, uh, the number of things that had to be done to make it a, a safe building, take it out of the dangerous building, uh, can be done in the remaining amount of time, but, you know, there's a lot of work that would need to be done in that amount of time, but it could be done. So that's where we stand right now. Um, you know, I guess when, when we see the bond, I believe we have the bond.
That's why I was going through the Chair, if I could. That was the whole point of this gentleman. He had, this is his second round. The first time he was told that, didn't like it. And the second, excuse me, I'll back up. The first time he was told that, he didn't like that, I believe by you, okay, was told what. Uh, the second time I seen you had sent some emails back, because there's some inquiry about what he, and it said quite clearly that the bond, it doesn't go with what's, the bond has to be for the demolition, demolition of the building per the ordinance, period. It was quite clear what it said. The third thing was, is we had talked about when we sat here and gave the gentleman, because we made a mistake, I guess, or something, and then notified him the right day, that there would be some kind of, uh, perspective that he would be doing some kind of, uh, site plans and all that within, within a period of time. And I think Councilman Parkinson asked him that question and, and the question was, is it yesterday? And he said, well, I'll start on the next day, which was the next day. And here we are sitting today and, and we're still talking about a performance bond. I don't, I guess I'm confused about what the big issue is, whether this gentleman wants to play by the rules or not. I mean, the performance bond is very easy. You go out and get it, you get it for the amount of money, the, the building department can tell you. And then you can play all you want with the dates, but you got the performance bond, which is what really we're concerned about, because we don't be on the hook for the issue. And the second, the last part was, the building's still in the original guy's name that said he couldn't afford to do it, was going to walk away from it, blah, 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 and it's still in his name. I mean, I'm, I'm kind of frustrated this particular issue hasn't moved on and why it's dragged so far without the city using its discretionary power as being a city and enforcing some of the rules. I mean, not to be rude, but there are rules just like, there are rules for him, for us, okay? And I, I don't understand that.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir, Colonel. I'm just wondering, and I'm going to go along with Councilman Kelsey there, because I have exactly the same concerns and I voiced them. I think they're dragging the feet, I think they're delaying and stalling. I, my feeling is that they don't intend to keep that performance bond, that they figure they're going to lose it, because they're not going to come through.
Yeah, and I think that's, you know, their, their reluctance on, well, there, there was two issues related to the bond. I think they, they didn't understand what, what the clear law said, that, you know, it was for demolition and it has to be in place. So there, there wasn't an understanding of that and there wasn't an acceptance of it. You know, here at this meeting, it was very clear, they, they didn't like the thought that they had to do it, but the law is what the law is. Um, I think the next evolution of this is that they don't believe that we are going to play, uh, fair with them. Trying to put it in better words. Um, and they felt that, uh, their concern was that, you know, we would be moving the, the goalposts on them and ultimately take that away from them. Um, you know, I, to that point, I don't think we've done anything other than be upfront and honest with them on what our expectations are. So I, I don't understand where that's coming from, but it is what it is. Um, you know, the building official seems to believe that there is a, a comfort level between he and this gentleman and that there will be one produced relatively too, so.
You know, my, my problem is, I don't know whether we're playing by their rules or our rules. We're, we're running the city.
Yeah. Well, I, I think, I think we're within our rules. Um, you know, when, when we allowed them to have time to, to do what they're, say they're going to do, I mean, that, that resets what the rules are. So they have that ninety day period, uh, to, to bring it into a, a safe building concept, get it out of the dangerous building. So, you know, what, what's happening now is they're reducing their, their days to be able to get it done, because, you know, part of the problem they're going to face, and, and I believe, uh, our building official is telling them this, is that, you know, they're not just going to say, well, we're going to do X, Y, and Z. There's actually going to have to be plans produced as well. And, and so I think that's something that they have to keep in mind, that even if they, if they produce a, a bond tomorrow and come in and fill out the paperwork for an application, it's not enough. You know, we, we are requiring people to submit actual plans that are stamped by, you know, architects or engineers. So I think that's, the other concern is, you know, will they be able to turn around whatever they're doing in a, a stamped, you know, a plan form that will meet what we're, what we require. So, I mean, again, ninety is ninety days. We know when that starts, we know when that will end. Um, and, you know, they, they know what has to be done. There's an agreement on, um, on a number of things that have to be done. And, and, you know, the best we can do is what, what we said we're going to do. Given the ninety days, we'll see if they can actually do the work that they say that they need to do.
When was the ninetieth, when was the ninetieth day?
I knew you were going to ask me that. You know, I have not looked at a calendar out, but, uh, probably in March would be the ninetieth. End of February, beginning of March, somewhere in that timeframe.
So you're talking just under two months at this, at this point?
Yeah.
So I would think it'd be reasonable for us to have notification that there'd be a bond in place by the next meeting.
Definitely.
And then we'd take further action at that particular time.
Yeah.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
When you say, when Matt, you say, "they understand," when you're saying "they," are you talking about the old people who have stonewalled and delayed and dragged on? Or the new people that said, "Oh, I, I do this for a living. I know what I'm doing." Which, which person are we dealing with?
Mr. Mason, I believe his name, is the gentleman that, uh, John Myers has been dealing with. And he's, he's represented as the individual that's going to buy the building and do the work.
But it's still in the other.
Correct.
Folks' names, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything further on that?
Nope. Unless there's any other questions.
I just got one last comment. Is it, would it be, uh, based on the mayor's, the suggestion that we always all have John here, the building departments, and we hear from the horse's mouth at the same time when the guy is here about whether he did or didn't. In other words, so there's none of this, well, I told John this and John's not here to rebut it and we go and play this game of, well, the next meeting, the next. So would it be appropriate to have John in the audience at least for reference or to be at the meeting so that, and if this individual comes, now if he doesn't come, then, then John doesn't need to be here, obviously, but that way we get the whole story, because this is where it all came to, it came to us to begin with, not John. I mean, and John has a leadway, I think, by the building department code to give him a leadway if he wants to, if I'm not mistaken. I think there's a John, or whether it used to be, there's a point where they can, the, within the discretion of the building, uh, because of the code, that he can give him, uh, a, a leadway of more than ninety days if he feels that doing something like that. I don't want that to happen. I want John to be in the audience to say that, you know.
So, so.
That's where I'm going with it.
Yeah, so I mean, a couple of different questions. Our first question is, uh, it just so happens that the next meeting, um, so on the sixteenth, I believe, we will be, uh, having a presentation, the department presentation is the building department. So John will actually be here at the next meeting. Uh, the second thing is that, you know, there, there is a lot of things on the list that needs to be done to that building. I mean, there are. I mean, there are a number of things, but not all those things that, you know, we would expect that building to, to be done to that building relate to it being safe or unsafe. And so what John has worked through are whether the, the major items that are, you know, make it an unsafe building. And if he complies with those and gets those fixed within the ninety day timeframe, you know, we'll bring it back to you. In, in a perfect world, we come back to you within that ninety day timeframe. He, uh, Mr. Myers says, yep, the, this is, these things were corrected, it is now a safe building, not a dangerous building. Still understanding, there's more work that has to be done to it. But at that point, you know, you would probably have to look at it and say, okay, it's no longer a dangerous building, and so we take it off that dangerous building list at that point.
We have a lot of time invested in this one currently, and I would say that for the meeting of the sixteenth, with John Myers being there. I, I would like the, the owner or the person that's going to be taking over to give us an update of what has been done at that time to. Qualify these questions that we have and to, uh, I guess, alleviate our fears, basically.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
I would like, uh, to have Matt and John give us a completion date as well. Uh, you know, to have something fixed up where it's not gonna fall in on you is one thing to make it safe, but the building has looked like a wreck for years. When are we gonna have it look decent for the neighborhood?
No, I, I think that's, again, you know, when, when we originally went into this, the, the concept was that if it was gonna be repaired, it was gonna be brought up to a C of O standpoint. You know, what, what the potential owner had, you know, kind of put out there was, well, you know, I don't know what the end result is going to be, so it's kind of hard to bring it in as a C of O. I think there is a, a middle ground there that, that, you know, if we look at it from the commercial code standpoint. You know, there are a minimum set of standards that all buildings are supposed to meet, regardless of what their use is, as long as a commercial property. And I think that's not in that ninety day timeframe to get to there, but I think there should be established a timeframe to do that. And again, if the own, if the potential owner is, is the man that he says he is, and he wants to get this renovated and get it occupied. You know, he's going to have, you know, that done relatively quickly, so we can start making money off of it. Now, one of, one of the things I know that John Myers, our building official, is talking to him about. Is getting, uh, the apartments that are in the upstairs renovated and occupied first. So I think that's kind of where they're going with the, the, you know, C of O point, that they'll probably be focusing on the residential use first, rather than the commercial. That could change if there's a commercial, you know, use that comes up and, you know, that takes priority, but just looking at it, right now, there's probably a better residential potential, right now, than there is a commercial potential. But you never know. So, I agree, we need, we need to establish some timeframes, but those timeframes probably are not gonna be held to, you know, I would not recommend we hold those to the, the bond piece of it. Because it really is outside of that, um, you know, dangerous building concept.
We're still in the same position we were, but six weeks ago, but I haven't seen progress since that point. I'd like to see some, some progress, that's why I would request the update for the sixteen.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'm on the same line as you are here, what really concerns me is, if we're having this much problem with them regarding the bond. If we lift the bond requirement, are we gonna get anything out of them? I mean, that concerns me, cause they're gonna say, oh, well, we, we did what we had to do, now we're just gonna let it sit there for another five years.
I, I, I think if, if the individual that's saying that he's going to own it were to purch- purchase it as part of this, you know, in this ninety day timeframe. You know, I, I think that I would be more comfortable than if the intent is just to keep it in the current hands. Because again, you know, the, the own, the current owners, you know, this has been an issue since two thousand and eight. So there really, there's no track record there that would indicate that, that there, there is a desire to do anything other than leave the building like it is. Minimal standard, they, they would be fine with that. So if that's, that's what happens in the ninety days, I would, I would agree a hundred percent that, that we, we shouldn't have any faith or trust in that. But I think if it, if they provide the bond, if the new potential owner provides bond, purchases the property, does the work in the ninety days. I, I think you should be a little bit more lenient with that, because I think there is a good faith going on there, I mean, this, this, you know, I.
Well, it hasn't, hasn't happened yet, though.
Right, so, yeah.
We haven't, we haven't seen that yet, and when we do, then, and hopefully by the next meeting, we will have, uh, some type of update for that.
Will do.
Anything further, uh, for the city manager? Hearing none, then we will move to our, um, department head report. We have the Downtown Development Authority and Economic Development Corporation Director, Mr. Giles Tucker. Fresh from, uh, the tree lighting ceremony, or that was a couple weeks ago.
Yes. I decided late that I would test out our new presentation stuff, so. There's a few things that are gonna be within the PowerPoint. There's a few things unfortunately I had to leave out. But thank you, um, I filled in for Lisa today, uh, cause I wanted to get in front of you guys in January. Um, let me pull this up.
We're gonna be checking your font, too.
My font looks better than Ray's, but I'm worried that Ray, I helped Bray out, but I can't help myself out.
Maybe Ray should come up and help you out.
I, I think we need to hire a tech department.
I apologize, everybody.
Should maybe get a partnership with the high school and have their A B department kids volunteer.
That's almost completely gone now, cause we have a tech department over there.
Oh, really?
Amazing.
Here we go.
I think we need to get some Jeopardy music in here.
How did you get the conference up here?
This will be seamless once we get used to it.
When I pulled it up, it wasn't, is it? Okay, that's you. Yeah, I just needed to get this thing out.
Right, so you gotta go.
No, always move forward.
This is a five-year technology, so.
Oh, I see, so we're stuck for five years.
Yes.
Shared experience.
Yeah, you know, they know technology.
Great score.
Where's the device? Apologize, guys, we did this earlier.
You have to.
Test run for you, too.
You have to flip the, the monitors, too.
Yeah, I can get the monitors, I just can't get the, the guy to work here.
Well, I'm just, I'm not necessarily here to say today, that's why I'm on delay here, are you trying to get this to be recognized?
Yeah, I think I just clicked on it. Device share.
And this is Don, the man behind the scenes.
Yes, yes, I'm the man behind the scenes. That's always the danger with, uh, the wireless, um, devices, that they don't recognize, plug a map, it's not a hard connection.
Did you wanna see if it can recognize it?
Well, I've never tried this either.
We got it to work earlier today.
On this computer?
Yeah.
Can you send it to his computer?
No, it's just, this is the same computer.
We'll give it a. We'll give it a couple minutes here.
So you're the head of that team now, maybe you wanna go there and help him out.
Do you have to just turn it off?
I just can't find the device, that's the issue.
How many people, can you give that?
It's under your, uh. It's under settings, isn't it? You need the, um.
Yeah, you need a file.
What?
Under the files.
This?
Yeah.
Don't look good when they, when the salesman demonstrated.
Yeah, when the salesman demonstrated, he didn't go through any of this stuff. You should be able to see your C drive and see everything plugged into it.
That's what I'm trying to find is the drive. There we go.
Oh, forget it. Hey, you gotta do how good.
Share drive.
Do you gotta download it? You should be able to just click on it.
Give it another minute.
All right. It's connecting. It's getting close. Talk, talk, Phil. All right, cool. All right, so what's not on the presentation, you know, what I do when I present to council, as I discuss, um, um, our two organizations. Design Physical Improvement, Marketing Events, and then Economic Development. What I was able to put together today is I wanted to highlight more of what we are doing and the way of planning with, uh, Design and Physical, uh, Improvements to the DDA. Just to get some housekeeping out of the way, um, our DDA meets on January eleventh at five P M. And then our EDC meeting, the first EDC meeting of the year, is January thirtieth at six P M. And we always meet here at City Hall. And this still isn't decided. Okay, ready to share, let's see. All right, I think we're in business now. There we go. All right, great. All right. I think the millennial would have less problems, right? Okay. All right. All right, so I wanted to use our technology, so, um, yes, so what is not on this presentation, um, are our two meeting dates, which I just discussed. Um, another big thing that happened for our Downtown Development Authority in December is B C's Pizza completed their facade improvement grant. Um, we're gonna be reimbursing them either this week or the following. If you haven't gotten pizza from B C's Pizza, check out the new facade, they did an excellent job. Um, we did even a brief, uh, present, uh, promo video with the mayor as well, um, highlighting the program. Um, the project, the cost to that for a project was close to forty thousand dollars in investment. Uh, ten thousand of that was reimbursed, uh, through the Downtown Development Authority's, uh, facade improvement grant. Uh, so it just shows another example of that, that commitment, uh, local businesses, I mean, that reinvestment is happening in our downtown. Um, and the DDA is really pleased to work with, uh, Brian Craddock and B C's Pizza. And it looks absolutely stunning, uh, they did a great job. I wanted to use some visual aids to kind of describe what we'll be discussing today. With the colder weather, I usually like to, uh, start working on some of my planning for the, for the next fiscal year. I think the last time that I was in front of the council, we had talked about the survey with food trucks and body art. Um, I put the deadline for submissions of that survey, uh, at January fifteenth, so it should be right before the next meeting. Um, we have, uh, approximately two hundred and eighty responses to the survey thus far. Um, I wanted to hit a goal of three hundred responses. And if I'm invited, or if you'd like me to, um, share that information with you, I'm happy to do so. But I was really encouraged to see how much, uh, feedback we have received on those two issues. It's really good to start engaging some of the folks that, uh, want to have their say in what the community looks like, uh, moving forward. A couple events that we have, uh, coming up shortly. We have, uh, in February of the tenth, from two to five P M on a Saturday, we're gonna be hosting the, uh, Fourth Annual Chocolate Walk. Uh, for those that aren't aware of the chocolate walk, um, essentially, it's like a, a citywide scavenger hunt. So we typically have about twenty businesses that participate. Each of them provides some sort of chocolate treat, whether it's, you know, like, you know, a cupcake, or candy, something Valentine's related themed. And, uh, participants have a sheet, and if they reach all of the, of the businesses and get a little sticker, they're entered to win a drawing. And that drawing winner receives some sort of incentive from all twenty of the business owners. So it could be as small as like a five dollar coupon, or a gift card, something like that. And what it does is it reintroduces, uh, Lincoln Park businesses to residents or anyone that's participating. And then the reward for that is incentives to go back to those businesses. So it's a fun way to get outside, even when it's cold in February, um, and it's a good way to reintroduce, um, residents to, uh, some of our local stores. And we do it at a very low cost, so it's a great event. Um, for those that are listening, I encourage you to, uh, check it out, and we are seeking businesses to participate. So, um, you can find me at three one three, three eight six, eighteen hundred, my extension is one two eight nine. Just give me a call if you'd like to participate, and we can discuss it further. Another one that's coming up, which will be particularly big this year, is our Fourth Annual Cinco de Mayo. It is going to be held on Cinco de Mayo, May fifth, Saturday, so it should be a very exciting event. Um, I have updated vendor and sponsorship forms, so we are ready to accept, um, applications for new vendors. And, um, we are looking for sponsors, so, um, if there are corporate partners or local businesses that are interested, um, in supporting this very, very important event. Um, they can reach me at the telephone number I provided, um, we also have these applications available on our website. Um, I forgot to mention that the survey is on our website as well. I am working to put together, uh, was one of the council goals, uh, a business expo, I, I plan to do that in the spring. I haven't nailed down every single last detail, so I'm gonna hold off on presenting that now, but, um, Councilman Higgins has been really, really helpful in, uh, preparing for this, uh, this, this new event. And I think that, um, we're really coming up with some great ideas. I'd like to spend a remainder of my time just to kind of talk about some of the major projects the Downtown Development Authority is working on. We have committed, uh, to our first phase of a three-phase, uh, DDA area lighting project with, uh, Detroit Edison. In the fiscal year seventeen eighteen, um, we expect to spend, um, a little bit over three hundred and, uh, excuse me, one hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. On upgrading our pedestrian lighting and as well as our street lighting in our downtown area. It may be a little bit difficult to see, but I've color coded, the first phase of our project is going to cover Southfield Road, essentially from I seventy-five to Fourth Street. This includes thirty-five existing streetlights, um, it includes removing over twenty-two of the pedestrian cube lights that you see outside. And it also includes removing and replacing, um, existing lighting that we have in the downtown area. This kind of demonstrates the kind of the, the before and after that you may be able to see. Apologize, that might be a little bit difficult for you guys to take a look at, but we're gonna be, um, upgrading. The, uh, current Cobra-style, uh, high-pressure sodium lights that you're gonna see with a L E D teardrop. So we did this because it's going to provide a little bit better of aesthetic look. It can also be a uniform, we're gonna be going with all black posts throughout the DDA. To, to improve the aesthetic and kind of uniformity within the downtown development area. We're also gonna be transplanting some of our decorative lighting that was really expensive. What we're gonna do is we're gonna be spreading it out a little bit, and, um, we hope that it's gonna create a uniform look within our downtown. Finally, there, as ma- many people know, we have a lot of pedestrian lighting that currently does not operate in our downtown. So, there's over a hundred and twenty-two of what I call the s- the cube lights, uh, pedestrian lighting. So, this plan, uh, factors in removing those, and we are gonna be replacing, uh, with, uh, four pedestrian-style, uh, main street, uh, L E D lights as well. So this'll be a part of a, a three fiscal year project, um, and I think it's a, uh, demonstration of the commitment that downtown has to, and, uh, Downtown Development Authority has. To, uh, physical improvements and resolving some of the, the issues, um, of poor maintenance or blight that I've, I've noticed in the last couple of years that I've been in this post. Another thing that we're exploring is wayfinding and signage, so we're put at the earlier stages of how we're gonna address this. A simple fix for us right now is. A simple fix for us right now is to let, let traffic know that we do have adequate available municipal parking. We do have a lot of parking spaces available. However, they're hidden behind our street, our buildings on Fort Street. So a simple, a simple fix to this is providing municipal parking throughout the downtown area on Fort and Southfield. And I've spoken with M.D.O.T., I just need to provide them with the exact locations and how there'll be a fix, whether they use a post or not. So the green signage that you see there, that is something that we can accomplish very shortly, that we can at least start directing folks to our downtown parking. Eventually, I'd like to see the DDA work with the EDC and possibly the city to have more of a comprehensive wayfinding system. This is just an example of a wayfinding system. It provides destinations to major landmarks within the community. It does it so color-coded, and it does it at different levels. So as we're planning for our next fiscal year, this is something that's on our radar. But in the short term, we're at least gonna be directing to our, you know, we're gonna be directing traffic to our public parking. Another thing that we've noticed is that currently, we have nine bike racks within our downtown area. When they were put in, I think in 2008 and 2009, they were put in directly into the cement. So there wasn't, it wasn't bolted on, essentially, they, they put those in, and then they cemented over top of it. The downside to that is when they're damaged, like you'll see here and here, is when they're bent or damaged, I have to remove the cement in order to remove the bike rack. So we're gonna be looking at exploring how we're gonna get rid of these, these bent or destroyed bike racks. And what I'd like to do is move us towards a bolt-on, a bolt-on solution to this problem. That way, if we do have a car strike the bike racks, we can replace them out faster. So again, we're, we're improving the look, and we're, and we're getting closer to adequate maintenance of our downtown amenities. We also, I've also noticed that there are areas that are, either already have a bike rack, that's not municipal, or are in clear need. An example would be Turning Port Clubhouse. They're currently using a pedestrian light that I will eventually remove for their bike rack. So this indicates to me that there's a need. And so we're gonna keep that in mind as we plan our future improvements down the line. Another important feature that I think that we need to include in our downtown is increasing the amount of trash bins that we have in our downtown area. So I'm directing a part-time DDA worker to remove trash twice a week. They do it on Monday, and they do it on Friday. We currently have 21 cans out, and those 21 cans are spread across all of Southfield, and then from Auto Drive to Champagne. So that's a big area. And with high speeds and wide medians, we, we tend to collect a lot of trash. So I'm hoping that when we add more, including adding them to our parking areas, we're gonna reduce the amount of time that I have a worker out picking up trash, opposed to just taking out trash. When we looked at it, in my view, although the, the style and the look of the trash cans that we have out in the, in the DDA area, it looks great. I think that they're very cost prohibitive. They're stainless steel, so they, they don't rust, they last longer, they're lighter. But I got a quote, and if I was to order 20 bins tomorrow, they'd be just shy of $1,700 apiece for a trash bin. This is something that we're gonna consider, consider long-term. I think this is a very straightforward, straightforward, but really important little fix that we can make in our downtown within the next fiscal year. What we have to decide is what is that worth to us? So does it make sense to add those 20 bins of what we have existing? Or do we replace with a more cost-effective solution that we can afford to replace if it's damaged, if it's hit by a vehicle, what have you? So those are some of the things that I've been focusing on over the break. We're just talking about basic amenities for the downtown. And we're keeping in mind what kind of amenities can we have in our downtown, and what can we maintain reasonably? So with that, I know it's kind of a deeper dive into design and physical improvement, but I'd love to answer any questions that you may have.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Giles, just to clarify, the, the DDA meetings are now moving back to 5:00 P.M.?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And if you'd be so kind, as I ask you to undo at every presentation, the DDA has four subcommittees, of which volunteers throughout the city are needed. And if you could go through those committees, and, and how to get in contact and be involved in actually being part of downtown development?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, we, we definitely could use more feedback from residents and business owners within our, within our community. Those four subcommittees are Organization, Design Physical Improvement, Marketing and Events, and Economic Development. Especially when we start doing downtown amenities, business owners are gonna be the ones that inevitably will have to look at it every day. So I'd love to get more feedback from our local business owners on what, what kind of can we put out, what kind of bike rack we put out. When we are doing the light upgrades, being able to communicate what their needs are. So that type of involvement is always appreciated.
Anything else for Giles?
Yes, sir.
Through the chair. When, when last we spoke, you had a big, big wad of paper on your desk to decide who owns what part of what in the park. The new park on Fort Street, can you tell me, we know anything yet? Who owns what part of which property and parking and?
The, well, the property on 1673 Fort is, is owned by the Downtown Development Authority. And then there is an alleyway behind it that is public access. But beyond that, I haven't come up with anything else since our last powwow, so.
Anything further? Well, thank you, Giles, for your, for your presentation. We'll move on to Citizens and Communications. If anyone would like to address council? Are you?
Thank you.
Giles, you putting us back in?
Yeah, let me, uh, do that real quick.
Success, thank you.
Sean Stansbury, good evening, Mayor and Council. Hope everybody had a nice Christmas and a Happy New Year. With the frigid temperatures we've had, I hope all our residents keep all our pets inside in the snow removal. For mail carriers and neighbors, I would like to thank our city employees that braved the cold to service our city. In our City of Lincoln Park Happings flyer, I seen the mayor wrote about the city council position. Great letter from you, Mayor, on the great responsibility the job brings. Very nice tribute to the late Mario, Mario DeSanto. I believe that he will, we will fill that seat with a person that will make Mario proud. That's all I have tonight, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have a program, can you hook me up with the program?
You need to, uh...
I'm just kidding.
You need to identify yourself.
Uh, yes, my name is Carlos Sossino, longtime resident of Lincoln Park. I know Mr. Mayor remarks you mentioned the Ford Street Plaza, and also the Sears Plaza. I actually was writing a letter to Fitness USA and/or L.A. Fitness, because we lost Fitness USA... Let me see if I can retract my statement. We lost Fitness USA, and we lost Powerhouse. So I believe the city is in need of a fitness facility. So I was thinking of those, actually, those two areas, the Sears Plaza and/or the Ford Street area for a fitness center. Lincoln Park currently, if I'm not mistaken, does not have a fitness center. Another idea was also the community center. If we had weight equipment over there, maybe we could give our residents of Lincoln Park a discount rate on fitness. So now that we brought up the DDA, that might be an opportunity for a fitness facility to move in in the downtown area. Also, last year, I was actually at the Ford Street Brewery when the Chocolate Walk was taking place, and it was a very pleasant day. A lot of people came in, and the wonderful cook there had some wonderful chocolate. So I would encourage all businesses in Lincoln Park to participate in that. And also, Happy New Year, everybody, and I hope we have a great, great year. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on to oral reports from the mayor and council. Council President Murphy?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to wish everybody a very happy and prosperous 2018. You know, the last, the last year or so has been difficult for us, but we've come through it with flying colors. We've pulled ourselves up by the bootstraps, and our city is, is already made the, the turn around the corner. As the mayor was talking about earlier, we've got our two shopping centers in the city starting to move forward with new developments. And we're not real sure exactly what they are, but it's a far cry from what we've had in the past with the vacancy that we've had in both areas. So I wish everybody a Happy New Year, and we're gonna keep on working real hard for you to make that turnaround complete. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Higgins?
Thank you, Your Honor. I too, I'd like to wish everybody a Happy New Year and a prosperous New Year. I'd like to congratulate the folks that put on the penny drop this year. Crowd was not as, as, as big as would have been nice. The weather, I don't think, was very friendly to us. But it was a nice event, a city event that went on. It was a very shame that I think, and I think it needs to be said, it needs to be brought out, that between the, they did two different penny drops this year. They did a young one for the kids at 8:00, and then they were gonna have one for the adults at midnight. And in between times, somebody got to our giant light-up penny and stole the innards to it. So the penny did not light up at midnight, but the, everybody who was there still went on, still had a good time. And I'd like to congratulate everybody who was involved, and I look forward to helping out and seeing that this event grows. This could be something really nice for our city, and like, glad to see it grow. I am very happy, very, earlier today, it was cemented that we will have the very first film festival next November at the high school. This is gonna be a major event coming to our city. We have a lot of different groups working on this together. The first weekend in November, it's going to be something spectacular, and I just want to congratulate the people working on that. This is going to be something really nice. And like our Downriver Comic-Con has brought in an event, and is also donating back to the schools with funds. The Film Festival is going to be a major event for the city, bringing in films and people. But it's also going to be a fundraiser, which will bring money back to the high school, to the drama department. So it's a win-win thing that's coming, and I want everybody to know about it. A gentleman came to the microphone tonight, talking about our Parks and Recreation Department, talking about it'd be nice to maybe have a weight room at the community center. I was at, we were talking about the five-year plan at the Parks and Recreation Commission. We went over that, and that is one of the things that they actually have, we're talking about. There are no firm plans on that, I will tell you, but it is something that people did bring up, and it is under consideration. Maybe down the road a bit, but it is being talked about. And why I'm talking about the community center, I want everybody to know, because I've had people from skate company come and tell me that they've gotten... People have come to them and said they've gotten bad information. Absolutely, Lincoln Park still owns that community center, the city still owns it, we still run it. We still rent the ice. It's a very, it's been, a lot of good things are going on over there. And I want people to know that absolutely you can trust it, you can get there, and we do have ice for rent. Please contact the community center if you would like to rent some ice. I'd like to congratulate the police department while we were off on our holiday. Over, over since the last meeting, they did a skate and, with kids, and it was very nice. I stopped by and seen some of the officers skating with the kids, and the kids' eyes just light up, and the police were having a good time. And I'd like to congratulate the police and thank them for doing such things. And that's really all I have this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Kelsey?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to apologize, this meeting, I've been a little bit underneath the weather. I must have got a little sinus infection to start off my 2018 year. Couple of comments real quick. The cops care thing is always a great event, and like Councilman Higgins, I stopped by too, and it was always packed. It's, they did a great job. I mean, it's something that people want to come to, and I think that's very nice for the kids and the citizens in the city to come to. It's, it's always packed. I mean, every time I go over there, they have a lot of people that are participating, and everybody's real friendly. It's a nice event. People ought to stop by and take advantage of it, it's real nice. The other thing is that the, I wanted to find out if, if the city manager has got together with the final draft of what happened when we had the power outage and all that stuff, as far as you were supposed to get us some information as, as far as the do's and don'ts, or the, or whatever, the recap of what happened to look at. And I know you were working on it, but I haven't seen it yet, so I'm kinda curious, when you get a chance, maybe you can...
Still working on it.
Okay, that's good enough. I'll move on then. One issue I seen, in Councilman Parkinson and myself have seen is, you know, you have an obligation to clean your sidewalks off. I mean, if you drive around the city, you see the businesses are not cleaning in the snow. Some of the citizens aren't, I mean, you know, it's hard enough for the pedestrians, if we're gonna do walk-through the city, or people that are doing their diligence to walk around the city. If you don't clean your sidewalks off, I mean, first of all, I'm sure it's against the ordinances. And second of all, it makes it a lot better community if you have a nice, clear patch where you see some neighbor or some businesses clean their property real nice, and the next one doesn't, and somebody's gotta rough it through there to get to the next patch. So just a reminder that you are obligated to clean that up after a certain period of time. It makes the city look better, and I think it helps your fellow residents if they're happening to walk in or bicycling through there. And especially the guy who delivers the mail, I don't think he finds it too uncomfortable to be walking on that. And the last thing I'd like to say is that everybody to have a Happy New Year. I hope this new year is good, as was last year, and I think it will be, and thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Dardzinski?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to start with Dylan's Toy Drive. And I don't have an exact count of, of what Dylan's Toy Drive gathered up, but I did see the pictures online, and it's, it's kinda hard to count exactly how many eight-foot tables were filled. His, his mom commented that there was still a half-trailer beyond what are on the pictures. So Dylan's Toy Drive was, we'll just call it a huge, huge success. So for the Lincoln Penny Drop, the third annual one, we had our, we had our first mini, mini penny drop princess. This is for the family drop at 8:00. And what we do is, we, all our young ladies that want to participate, 12 and, 12 and under, we have, we put their names into a container, and then we draw who is going to be the mini penny drop princess. And the first one was Emily Clark, eight years old. And she attends, kept in grade school, and she was very comfortable with being the, the mini penny drop princess, and very ready and capable of giving her first interview to Sue Satia, the reporter that was there, so. And I can tell you that she's going to be in the Memorial Day Parade. I have a few other days regard, ideas regarding that, but I'm gonna talk to her mom and dad first. Really just a very delightful young lady, and, and it's, it's good to see such, such happy kids like that. It's, it makes, it makes all the community work that we do worthwhile. To that end, the Lincoln Penny Drop is officially moving to the VFW Hall, that's post 552. So next year, or this year, as it were, December 31st, you can expect bands and food, drinks. We'll probably, we'll, we'll always do raffle baskets, so we'll probably have some kind of raffle baskets. We had that squared away at 10:15 a.m. on New Year's morning, so that's how fast we move on that stuff. Oh, no, 10:08 a.m., I just looked at my notes there. Yeah, regarding the in-between periods there, I, I'll just take responsibility for my own, for the penny that I built being vandalized. And, and unfortunately, they don't get the tongue-lashing that they deserve for doing vandalism like that. So, yeah, they, they must have come up with some... So, yeah, they must have come, some, Councilman Higgins believes he saw the teenagers who were running through the field, and probably after they, they yanked on the power cord until they ripped it out of the penny, and that brought the pole down. So, I'm sure they're not aware that eight months of time went into raising the funds to build that pole, and to build that penny. So, but we'll keep that tongue-lashing at that level, and because we've already moved on. It's going to be a bigger event next year, and we'll find some other responsibilities around town for our new penny, mini penny drop princess. And we'll be sending out a press release on that. She's, like I said, she's a very delightful young girl. Okay, planning meetings coming up. This is for community events, and it is a new year, so everybody think about how you might want to get involved and volunteer some time, a couple hours a month. You have no idea how much it's needed, and how much it does help. The next Downriver Comic Book Convention planning meeting is Sunday, January 21st, 1:30 p.m. at the Ford Street Brewery. Immediately following that meeting, at about 2:30 p.m., will be a Hands of the City General Planning Meeting, and that will be for the All-Day Jam, the Memorial Day Parade, our book fair, the before-mentioned Film Festival. And of course, we want to get some new people involved with the 2019 Penny Drop, Lincoln Penny Drop. I'd like to see the Lincoln Penny Drop turned over to a couple, or to one person who wants to be in charge of that throughout the year. So, again, January 21st, Sunday, 1:30 p.m. for the Downriver Comic Con meeting, and then immediately after that for a general Hands of the City planning meeting. It's a good time, folks, in January, decide what you might want to get involved in, as far as being involved in the city, and just jump right in. And thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Parkinson?
I also want to add, Happy New Year to everybody. I hope this is a better year than last for everybody. The cold weather, please watch your neighbors, especially the seniors. And the animals, if you see any problems, please call the police department. I hope we have a better year this year. Last year, the city made a lot of headway. I hope this year will be that much better, things are under total control. Councilman Kelsey brought up the snow removal, also the piling of the stone alleys and streets. I've seen that quite a bit, so they need to be warned not to pile up in streets and cities. I'd like to thank the police chief for his presentation on the reserves. It was very nice. And I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. It's been mentioned about the, about the animals. When it drops below zero, or is below freezing, and they do not have shelter, that is not what you think of when you, when you have a pet. So, if you have an animal of that type, it's your responsibility to make sure that they are safe and warm. And when the people don't do as they're, they're supposed to, it's your job to call and let us know that that is happening. So, please, if you see a dog, animal that is being maltreated, please call the police department, let them do their job. Don't leave it on somebody else, please make that call. And Happy New Year, everyone. I hope it's a blessed one for all, for you and your families. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Support.
All right.
Councilperson Murphy?
Yes, sir.